Okay, welcome everybody.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Cupertino Planning Commission of June 10th, 2025. I hope you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng?
Present.
Commissioner Linska?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Vice Chair Casalscheron?
Present.
Chair Rao?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for May 27th, 2025. If I may have a motion if fellow commissioners.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Can we go?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I see no postponements. Are there any postponements from staff? I guess not. So with that, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law prohibits the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Do we have any oral comments, Madam City Clerk?
We have one speaker in person, Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. Last night, I went to Mayor Chow's community chat. I heard a litany of complaints about the permitting process in the city. One of the complaints was about the cost of building permits. Chair Rao, may I point out to you that the city has a policy of cost recovery for all departments, including planning. This policy was not put into place by the previous council, as you have accused. It was a matter of prudent fiscal responsibility put into place many councils ago. I agree that permit fees, particularly for small projects, seem high, and the timeframes for approval seem to be problematic. However, just reducing fees without addressing the underlying issues will only contribute to a budget shortfall for the city. First of all, is planning fully staffed? Are there any vacancies? Secondly, how many on the staff have at least a year's experience in Cupertino? My observation is that the turnover has been high for the past four to six years. For those of us who've worked in the industry, no, it takes six months or so for a staff member to be fully productive. Staff may not be able to determine this, but how many different planners touch an individual permit? I talked with one developer who had to work with three different planners, which meant that a lot of extra time for staff as well as the developer to come up to speed. In addition, each planner focuses on different aspects. Thirdly, how many iterations are typically involved in an approval? How many applications are approved on the first submission? I'm guessing not many. Multiple submissions are a stop-start process, so the planner goes on to the next application until resubmission. Are homeowners aware that changes and multiple iterations take more staff time and lengthen the approval process? Under the current regime, are staff meetings required, or does the individual planner have ministerial authority? All of these contribute to costs and delays in approval. Fourthly, can the city have an expedited process similar to Sunnyvale, which does over-the-counter approvals for run-of-the-mill minor residential projects? Arbitrarily cutting fees only contributes to the city's financial shortfall. More importantly, the city needs to streamline its permitting process.
Thank you, Jean. That is your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
We have no speakers in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we close the oral comments.
Actually, before you close, I think there was somebody who was ready to hand.
This gentleman in the bright dark gray shirt.
Thank you. We will try and keep it slow, and hopefully that helps. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our public hearing, Agenda Item 2. Consider a development permit, use permit, tentative map, architectural and site approval, and tree removal permit to consider the construction of a 59-unit townhome condominium development. The project utilizes Senate Bill 330 and provisions of the State Density Bonus Law. And with that, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Rao, members of the commission. I will be turning the staff report over to Emmy Sugiyama, the senior planner and project manager for this project, and I believe the developer is present as well with their team to have a presentation afterwards. So, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Chair Rao and Commissioners. Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff here today to discuss this request by Summerhill Homes for a housing development project. The project property is located off of Stevens Creek Boulevard, adjacent to the Crossroads Shopping Center, and it's located within the heart of the city's specific plan area. At this time, or at the time that the city received the application, the property was zoned planned general commercial, or CG, and residential, rez. The site currently has two former restaurants, Fontana's and Pizza Hut, as well as operating Staples. The city received a preliminary application under Senate Bill 330 in January of 2024, which vested the project's standards that were in place at that time. Later in 2024, the city adopted its sixth-cycle housing element, which noted that these properties were priority housing sites number 40 through 43. However, because the project had an active SB 330 application submitted, it is not subject to the standards that were modified during that housing element update. The housing project makes use of a number of housing laws, state laws to be specific. The first is the Housing Accountability Act, which reduces the city's ability to deny or condition a project that meets the city's objective standards. Under the Housing Accountability Act, the city cannot apply non-objective standards to a housing development project. As previously discussed, an SB 330 or Housing Crisis Act streamlines the permitting process and allows for the applicant to lock in or vest their fees and standards that were in place at the time that they submitted their preliminary application. The project also makes use of the state's density bonus law, which allows for additional units, waivers, concessions, and reduced parking standards. However, the applicant is only proposing to make use of the allowed concessions and waivers.
My apologies. If I can pause you, we don't see your presentation for the remote attendees.
Oh, you do not? Okay, let's see if that can be fixed. Okay. It's showing up on the monitors. Let's see if we can have that. That might be in control. Okay. Thank you for letting me know. I think that's above my ability here.
Might be able to share it on Zoom if you're on Zoom?
Oh, but you're on the laptop. I see.
I haven't selected that. It looks like it's showing up there.
Yeah, it looks like it's showing up. Is that not correct?
I don't. I can try and pull it up on this one as well, and maybe that'll assist.
Sorry about that.
No.
Do we need the video team's assistance?
Yes, I do. All righty.
Should be up in a minute.
Is that showing up for everybody? No, still not. Okay. Any feedback on that?
Yes, it is showing up now.
Oh, it is? Okay. You can see it?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. I'm going to go ahead and just skip, though, to where we were discussing before, before it was mainly word slides anyway. And so back into it, the applicant is making use of the state's density bonus laws, which allows for additional waivers and concessions and units to be provided, but they are only making use of the concessions and waivers at this time. Finally, the city is subject to the requirements of the No Net Loss, or Senate Bill 166, law, which requires that the city maintain a list of housing sites that can accommodate the required RENA. And as noted in the project staff report, the city has found that there is adequate surplus to accommodate for this project. All right. So the project itself consists of 59 townhome-style condominium units spread across eight buildings, and 12 of those units are below-market-rate units, and the other 47 are market rate. The buildings would be a mixture of three- and four-story structures with units ranging from about 1,800 square feet to about 2,700 square feet. Each unit has a two-car garage. An additional parking is provided on the site for guests. The project also incorporates a central outdoor open space for residents. To accommodate the development of these units, which will remove approximately 45 existing development trees, and those trees would be replaced with trees throughout the site, approximately 71 new trees will be added. Off-site trees, including an existing adjacent oak tree, will not be removed as part of this development. The project also includes a vesting tentative map for condominium purposes. Here you can see two renderings provided by the applicant, one showing a view of the buildings from Stevens Creek Boulevard, and the other showing the proposed common outdoor area. All right. So based on the review of the applicable objective standards, the project is consistent with the requirements of the city's general plan, heart of the city's specific plan, as well as the municipal code. The project includes a use permit to allow for residential use within a mixed-use zoning district, and then the applicant is proposing or requesting two concessions under the density bonus law to waive the requirements for a conditional, a commercial component to be incorporated into the project. It also should be noted that the concessions and waivers that are proposed under the density bonus law can only be denied under specific circumstances, including that they have an adverse impact on either historical property or health and safety. In addition to these two concessions, the applicant is also requesting 10 density bonus waivers. For each of these waivers, the applicant has noted that imposing the requirement could potentially result in the elimination of units, reduced floor area of each of the units, or a substantial change to the design of the building. The first waiver being requested is to allow for a modification of height, which typically would require or have a maximum height of 45 feet measured from the adjacent sidewalk. In this case, the applicant is proposing two buildings, one at 45 feet 10 inches and the other at 45 feet 8 inches. The two buildings are noted here with the waiver shown across them. The second waiver is to allow for a modification to the required 35-foot front setback, and this would allow for a reduced 26-foot front setback. The third waiver is also to modify setbacks, the side setbacks in this case, which would typically be required to be 18 and 1/2 feet. However, the applicant is proposing at minimum a 15-foot setback along the sides shown here. The third waiver would be to allow for the modification of the required 56-foot setback in the rear, where the applicant is proposing a 32-foot setback. Similarly, we do require a setback for the second and third-story portions of a structure within the heart of the city specific plan, and so they are also requesting a waiver from that specific standard to allow for their reduced rear setback. The sixth waiver would be to allow for service access to be taken from Stevens Creek Boulevard rather than the rear of the property, which would require routing through the neighboring property. The seventh waiver would be to allow for the reduction of the required 6-foot clearance for private open space. The applicant is proposing a smallest dimension of 4 and 1/2 feet for these open spaces. The applicant is also requesting to waive the requirement for an additional planting strip to be provided along the length of their guest parking area. This would conflict with their proposed location for a pedestrian pathway. And then the final two waivers would be to allow for an increase in the total lot coverage by 3% and a reduction in the required parking space size from 10 feet by 20 feet to 9 feet 10 inches by 18 feet. And then while not required at this time, the project will be required to provide a public art and parkland dedication or in-luffy payment following the project's approval. At this time, the applicant is proposing to provide a public art plaza in the northeastern corner of the property. And then additionally, based on the project's site's characteristics, staff is recommended, and the applicant has also requested the payment of a parkland in luffy. The project has also been reviewed against the city's BMR requirements. This is to ensure that the proposed BMR units are compatible, comparable with the market rate units. And here, staff has found that the BMR units are generally comparable to the size and type of market rate units being proposed. Finally, the project has been found to qualify for a Class 32 categorical exemption. In the analysis for this exemption, the city's third-party consultant reviewed the environmental reports that are listed here and has also confirmed that the project would not have any significant effects on the environment. Among the reports reviewed was the transportation analysis, which included a VMT analysis for SEQA purposes, as well as an LOS analysis for the purposes of meeting the city's transportation requirements. And so with that, staff recommends that your commission adopt the draft resolutions, recommending that the city council find the project exempt from SEQA, make the required bindings of no net loss, and approve the development permit, or development permit, use permit, architectural and site improvement, tentative final map, and tree removal permit.
Excellent.
And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmy. That was information-packed, and at the same time, you took us through the whole project. So before we go further, I do want to ask my fellow commissioners if you have any export disclosures?
Yeah, I met with the applicant yesterday.
Yes, I met with the applicant last week.
Thank you. Same here, met with the applicant last week, I believe, and probably once before that.
I met with applicant twice last week and a few months ago, and I have also spoken with some other residents that live on the Schofield Street.
I met with the applicants last week.
And likewise, I've spoken with residents that are neighboring the property on the south side.
Oh, right. I've spoken to a few residents as well.
Okay. All right, very good. So with export disclosures out of the way, questions for staff? If our fellow commissioners have any questions for staff? Anyone wants to go first? So I have a question. If you might comment a little bit on the, this was or is a housing element site, is that right? So can you talk a little bit about the housing element site designation and density versus the nature of this application and its proposed density?
Yes, certainly can do that. The housing element placed the site at a minimum density of 50 units per acre, so it was in the 50 to 65 units per acre. This fell into the sites we had anticipated could have been a mixed-use site. So what that meant is, without getting into the technical jargon, we assumed a realistic capacity of build-out of 75% of the maximum. So that would have been 145 total units, which were listed in the table in the housing element. So it's, what, 86 units more than what we're getting through this proposal here? I think as Emmy noted, this is an SB 330 project, so the preliminary application came in about five months before our housing element was adopted. And that changed the housing element in general plan, land use designations, the zoning came in July. So it's essentially locked the project into how things existed in January 2024, where you had a maximum density of 25 units per acre, no minimum. So in that sense, this project is compatible. It's about five units less per acre than what was allowed in January. If a similar project were to come in now, it would not be allowable under the housing element designation having a minimum of 50.
And so to clarify, this site is about 2.9 acres?
Right, it's just under three. I think the net is about 2.9.
So if this were a housing element project, you would be looking at what number of units this would be?
We expected 145. So it could have had, not counting a density bonus, though, you could have had 65 units per acre, so which would have got you even closer to, what, 65 times three, so 195? So it could have been much more dense, and I would expect any project would have been invoking a density bonus. So it's very likely, if you were at the maximum of the housing element, you could have hit or exceeded 200 units.
And what maximum floors would we permit on such an application at density?
Our four allows up to 70 feet, but again, with density bonus, height is waivable, but you can go up to 70 feet without invoking a density bonus with that zoning designation.
And no stipulation of max floors?
No, we had a five initially proposed last summer, but we just went with an overall building height. It would, 70 would likely be a five-story building, but it could be six.
Okay. So just to clarify, a housing element site at this density would mean maybe five to six floors and close to 200 units? And the reason that we have this application at 59 condo-style or townhome-style condos with three floors is because they submitted a preliminary application before the certification of the housing element?
That is correct. So they have all of the standards that were in place in January of 2024.
Okay. I'll pause if anyone else has questions.
Well, just to clarify, though, they could choose to forego the date they locked in that application and go with the new zoning, correct?
Correct. That would be their option to do so.
And maybe another clarifying question. Given the preliminary application was submitted, was there a reason this site was included in the housing element site list at that density?
This site, if I remember, was chosen in 2022 when we were first looking at development sites, I think largely because you had two vacant restaurants at that time. I'm not sure when they became vacant, but it's been some time. So these sites had been anticipated as housing element sites for some time. The initial exercise we went through, we just set minimum densities. They didn't become refined really until the six months or so before the housing element was adopted. But most of the Stevens Creek corridors, either 50 to 65 or 65 to 80. There's nothing below 50 on Stevens Creek in the housing element.
Sorry, just to clarify the height also. If they have a density bonus, they can go past the five or six, right?
Oh, correct. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Other questions from our commissioners? Okay. I guess one other question that I had. So the RENA units, how will we compensate for the reduction in RENA units?
I think you're referring to the no net loss, which Emmy touched on. There's a table in the staff report. Right now, we don't have to compensate, but going off of this, if you were to get a succession of projects at a lower density at the low and moderate income levels, because I think people look at the RENA as a whole, we're well beyond, 1,000 units beyond for market rate. But since RENA is looked at per income category, you can kind of think of it as three renas. We are now less than 100 surplus in the low and moderate income categories. So it does result in a reduction, but as long as we can still say we're greater than zero, we have no net loss. But it does put a little pressure on how future sites would develop, so we don't continue to lose.
Okay, any final questions? If none, we will go to the applicant if they would like to present.
Do you have the presentation, Emmy? Emmy's loading up a presentation.
Awesome. Good evening, Commissioners. But not on the Zoom yet. Not yet on the Zoom. Oh, it is on now. So very good. Thank you. Thank you to staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Austin Lin, Development Manager for Summerhill Homes. I'm joined tonight by Steve Bowle, Vice President of Development for this project, Kevin Ibrahimey, Senior Vice President, and members of our design team. For those of you unfamiliar with Summerhill, we're a local residential developer based in San Ramon. Since 1976, we've built more than 7,000 homes in the Bay Area. We pride ourselves on the quality of our homes and the communities that we build. This project is especially meaningful to me, as I personally grew up in Cupertino. I have fond memories of taking swimming lessons as a kid at Rancho Rickinata, Friday nights at Chinese school at Montevista, and playing pickup basketball at Calabasas Park. I took SAT classes on Stevens Creek Boulevard, near the Old Elephant Bar across from Valco, and spent countless hours studying at the Cupertino library. I still, to this day, love exploring all the food on South D'Anta Boulevard, with the beef noodle soup at QQ Noodle being my personal favorite. Before I begin, I'd like to thank city staff for working with us on this project, in particular, Emmy Sugiyama. Emmy has been a pleasure to work with. Her professionalism, responsiveness, and thoughtful feedback have helped us to meaningfully improve our proposed community. In addition, we are deeply grateful for the invaluable support provided by Pugh Osh and Luke Conley. Next slide, please. As Emmy explained, we're proposing to build 59 new townhome-style condominiums at 20840 Stevens Creek Boulevard in compliance with the general plan and zoning designation for the site. The city council designated the site as a housing inventory site in the current housing element, with the goal of encouraging the site to be redeveloped for residential use. We've worked collaboratively with city staff to design a project that adheres to Cupertino's objective development standards. Additionally, our plan meets the intent of the heart of the city's specific plan by enhancing the pedestrian experience along Stevens Creek Boulevard with a double row of trees, an inviting interface with front doors facing the sidewalk, and a pedestrian plaza anchored by artwork. Based on feedback, we've added screening trees we've added screening trees along property lines and increased the setback along the southern boundary to improve the transition and interface with the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. We submitted an SB 330 preliminary application for the project in January of 2024, hosted a neighborhood meeting in June of 2024, and submitted our formal application in July of 2024. Since then, we've worked closely with city staff through five rounds of detailed review, ultimately submitting a fully compliant set in March of 2025. Next slide, please. The architecture draws on Mission-style aesthetics with arch porch elements, low sloping hip and gable roofs with rounded roof tiles and metal accent details and railings. Window shapes and sizes are straightforward and create a rhythm for the elevations. Exterior materials include a high-quality mix of decorative tile accents at key window locations and porch openings. Color schemes have been thoughtfully developed to showcase the Mission-style architecture. Next slide, please. In addition to complying with the state energy code and the city's REACH code, the project will be all electric and all the homes will be equipped with solar panels. The community will include drought-tolerant landscaping, water-conserving irrigation systems, including climate-sensitive controllers in common areas, and low-impact treatment of stormwater runoff. In addition, every garage will be EV-ready with a capacity for a Level 2 EV charger. Next slide, please. The project will provide several important public benefits for the community. First, the project will provide 59 new homes contributing to the city's RENA obligations for the sixth housing cycle, and also gives families and aspiring first-time homebuyers like myself a chance at homeownership in Cupertino. Second, we're proposing to designate 12 of the units as below-market-rate units or BMR units. Six of the BMR units will be for median-income households, and six will be for moderate-income households in compliance with the city's below-market-rate housing program. Third, the project will contribute approximately 2.7 million in park fees, 550,000 in school fees, and 120,000 to the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class IV bike lane project. Fourth, we are also contributing to the realization of the heart of the city's specific plan by enhancing the pedestrian experience on Stevens Creek Boulevard with a double row of trees, a small seating area plaza, and we are also proposing to include artwork. The new residents from our community will contribute to the transformation of the heart of the city to a pedestrian-oriented walking district, and they will have the ability to walk to the shops and restaurants offered along Stevens Creek Boulevard and South D'Anta Boulevard. Next slide, please. With these public benefits, we believe that the project will be a valuable asset to the community, helping the city meet the demand for housing so that it can sustain a thriving, multi-generational community and a pedestrian-oriented heart of the city commercial district. Thank you again for your consideration this evening. We respectfully request you recommend the project for approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I had two questions. The first is around parking. So I noticed that there you are leveraging usage of the Party City parking lot. It was kind of hidden, but southeast corner. And so I was curious if you've coordinated with that owner buyer's family, like, how long do you expect that arrangement to be there? You know, if the residents here become reliant on that arrangement and something changes on the other side. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Oh, sure. I think. Oh, hi. I'm Steve Bowe with Summerhill Homes. As a point of clarification, we're actually not relying on any of the parking. What I think maybe what you're seeing within the development set is we're restoring some of the spaces on their on the shopping center side. As part of the transition, we're closing off some of the driveways. So we have to restore those park. We're filling them in with parking spaces on the other side.
Okay. So will but would the residents be using those spots?
No, they're separated by a fence or property boundary as well. They're not for the residents.
Okay. I thought there was a gate listed somewhere.
There's a couple of like pedestrian gates, but those are secured for future development of if those their sites ever develop.
Okay. So the gates are locked?
Correct.
I see. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then my second question is just around the retail concession. So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that concessions are usually based off of the need to save cost. I was curious, what are your cost savings coming from not putting in the retail? Just for the knowledge of the public, we've gotten a lot of emails from the public, you know, about the loss of retail.
Hi, Kevin Ibrahimey, Senior VP for Summerhill. So by not incorporating the retail space, we're able to provide the number of housing units that we're providing. If we were to provide retail at ground level, we would lose a substantial amount of units for the retail and the parking that would get associated with retail. So the loss of the units would make the project not viable. Alternatively, if we had a kind of a mixed use setup where you have retail on ground level and then you had residential units above it, the cost of that construction would be prohibitive with the number of residential units that we have on site. So those are the two different scenarios that you could have retail that wouldn't work for the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? And so maybe I can ask a couple of questions. So thank you for choosing to build something that sits well with the community and hopefully sits well with your buyer audience as well. Just as a point of clarification, I believe state law allows you to further reduce parking, but you are providing two parking stalls per unit. Is that is that is that fair?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And so if this were an R4 project that were built at the densities that we talked about, that application in fact could be built with no parking required? Is that?
It would likely be one space per unit. There's also the potential, I don't know where the transit stop is here, but AB 2097 that went into effect more than a year ago could eliminate any parking requirements for new development as well. So it would be extremely unlikely if a higher-density development, though, had more than one per unit.
And so if the applicant can comment on your choice to provide two parking stalls and then how many of or how many guest parking stalls, I guess?
We have 11 guest parkings, and I'll let Kevin talk about that.
Yeah. So for marketing purposes, we have townhomes while they're being condoed, but they have a townhome-style living. The people who want to move into these units generally like to have two parking spaces. There rarely we have one-bedroom plans that we may provide a one-car garage. But generally speaking, we provide two-car garage for this type of a product because that's what our buyers are looking for.
And then another question that was mentioned earlier, I believe, in the staff report on service access being from the front. Can staff or the applicant clarify what is the full set of service access that we're referring to? And were there other choices here? Or was this a preferred choice?
Yeah. So the the services in this case would be really limited to garbage and fire, right, being able to access the site. In in this one in particular, any other service entry would have probably needed to go through the neighboring property, meaning that there would have been some intrusion into the parking area that's now being kind of refurbished there, as well as a requirement to route a lot of the trucks and the truck noise towards the residential area. So we we did feel that in this case, the proposal for them to be kind of located in the front was supportable, as well as a waiver being requested.
Thank you. Appreciate the thoughtfulness preventing the neighborhood on the south side from having to experience that service access traffic. So I think that's that's considered. Commissioner Shorff?
So you keep saying these are it's townhouse-style condominiums. So what is a townhouse-style townhouse versus a townhouse-style condominium?
Sure. So a townhouse is typically a vertical unit where you have nobody above and below you.
Right.
That's generally what we have here. However, we condo condo mapping is 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 an engineering term that you subdivide the units to their airspace. By doing that, we provide flexibility, for instance, for the HOA to maintain all of the exterior of the units, because they can the HOA can own and be responsible for the exterior of their units, whereas if it's a townhome project, I've had many of them where the homeowners wind up being responsible for it. So we find that when we condo, we do a condo overlay on a townhome, it provides us a lot more flexibility as we are organizing the homeowner association.
Okay. And how is it still 10 years that the builder is responsible for any defect, latent defects?
Yes, it's a 10-year warranty, but different components of the home are part of that warranty.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Phone?
It's related to that to that question. I know this is something that was the case in older times. You have you do have a condo map part as part of the application. These units will be for sale on day one, right?
Yes, all of the units are for sale. That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So a couple of questions. One is, can you speak to why you chose to stay at 20 units an acre instead of going to 65 units an acre?
Yeah. So at the time that we submitted the application and working with the property owner, the zoning max was 25 units per acre. We were working many months before we submitted the application. So that seemed to follow the zoning really well, what we're proposing, a lot less exceptions. In addition to that, we find that this type of product is really sought after by homeowners, where when you do a podium-type project with with higher density, is it's much harder to finance and you don't have you don't have the interest from the buyers as you do in what we're providing here. But this feels like your own place, your own house. It's a very different feel than a podium condo project, a true condo project.
Follow-up question is, how long before you start building after demolition?
Sure. So typically demolition takes three to four months. Grading site improvements take eight to 12 months. And immediately upon that, we start construction of the homes.
I'm curious, you choose to pay the parking fee versus providing parkland? Any thoughts on that?
As we initially met with staff, met with council members, looked at the site, it seemed like everybody was good with the approach of paying the fees. The fees could be used better used at a different location than here. So that's the direction that we went with.
And and the park plaza at the front, is that going to be maintained by the HOA?
That's correct. That's maintained by the HOA.
Okay. I think we will go to public comment, and then we can continue with commissioner questions. Madam City Clerk?
We have six speakers in person, and we have one hand raised on Zoom. Our first speaker is Rajiv, followed by Lynn, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Rajiv.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rajiv Chamraj. I live on Schofield Drive. If you look at the map, it shows 33 tract number, the tract number, that is where I live. My all my bedrooms face the property of the proposed development by these two gentlemen. I have no objection building the house. My only my only concern is, if you look at the offset they are showing is 37 feet. Actually, it should be 59 feet, but they're claiming they can get waivers, which is fine. But the road butts into my property almost five feet from my property line. And all my bedrooms are faced that, you know, as you guys know, I'm already living on Hellwall on Schofield Drive because of the school traffic. I've been talking to the city for the last 10, 15 years, and city doesn't seem to care, which is fine. So and then the second thing is, I never knew this project was happening, right? So only when they put up the board on the Stevens Creek Boulevard, my daughter was walking the dog, and she said, hey, Dad, do you know this property is coming up? I said, oh, come. So and then I checked with my neighbors, and nobody knew this is happening, and nobody said that they got any notification from the city or from the developers last year. I would I would love to work with the developers, you know, because it it butts into my property, and they've got every right to build it. But I got every right to live peacefully the way I've been living for the last 23 years, right? So all I asking is, you know, fine, now let the project go, but make sure that the the road, the C street or the D street doesn't butt into so close to my property line. And if there is anything that they can do, you know, softscaping or anything to burden the load on us, right? Because the next three years, there'll be a lot of noise, a lot of traffic. I can change my bedrooms right now because it's that's that's an expensive proposition. But all I ask is that the city, I'm happy to work with the developers. And yeah, I wish I had known this a year ago. I could I could have offered my input in that. But now I think it's they've crossed the path. Sorry, crossed the stream. I don't think they can go back or revisit this the design again and again. So I would suggest that, you know, take a look at the street and see how we can minimize that, you know, the street width or, you know, pushing it back a little bit the forward. You know, I would suggest that, you know, why don't the city give up the sidewalk and let the property guys let them pull it all the way to the street and see how how fun it will be for all the residents of Cupertino, rather than just affecting myself and the two other two other owners that are living on the Schofield Drive. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I hope to work with the developers and see how we can minimize this 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 impact on my 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 living in the on the Schofield Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajiv.
Our next speaker is Lynn, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedore. Welcome, Lynn.
Hi. My name is Lynn, and my main concern is that the property going through the sidewalk on Stevens Creek, they want to put in pork cement and then impress like a brick-type design. When you do that, it raises it up, and it makes it very, very dangerous for chairs. I live on Bianchi Way. I've lived there for almost 40 years. And we know about cobblestone pavers from the Cupertino. They throw the chairs down. I've been thrown out of my chair. I do not wish to get into litigation again with the city of Cupertino. But we need a smooth transition across those driveways, not something that I mean, if you want to put colored cement in there, fine. But please don't impress it or put cobblestones in there because we cannot access the sidewalk. And then we're thrown back into the bike lane on Stevens Creek, which is dangerous with all the electric bikes. So I appreciate if that was changed so that the the transition from the driveway is smooth and not not wobbly or, you know, it looks nice, but it's not functional. And it would it would violate ADA at this point. It has to be a smooth surface. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedore, followed by Gil Doyle. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you, staff, for doing a lot of work on this and with working with the developer. And I would have wished there had been more public outreach. We weren't actually aware that this had gone so far until I saw the actually, my husband saw the signboard on Stevens Creek Boulevard last week. In that regard, my main overriding goal in this is to make sure that the Valley Oak that is south of Dish Dash and adjacent to the Pizza Building, that that is secure. The city has spent a great deal of time, if you look back at the history of this, it goes way back to when Dish Dash was well, the previous one, I think it was a sandwich shop. There was a great deal of work to make sure that there was a tree retained there. I would like to know how much how many feet there is from the existing Valley Oak there to the back wall of this new project going that would be westward? Is that correct? No, east westward. I don't see that on the maps, and that thing has got to clear the canopy. Those Valley Oaks, I have one in my front yard, they will last 400 years if you do not encroach. And I have seen so many times when people build within the canopy. I would like to hear tonight what that footage is. I'm sure that the city of Arborist, I didn't see any pictures of the tree or Arborist report. I also could not find the LOS traffic report or the VMT report. I have requested that there be an LOS traffic study of this project. That is what we used to do when we were planning Valco on the east side. I don't know what's happening. I don't know what's happening on the west side, but that's the way we do it on the west side. LOS is the one that determines the degradation of the intersections. V M T is no good. It doesn't work. In that regard, I'm very, very concerned about the loss of retail. It'd be nice if someone could turn their phone off. Loss of retail. S B 330 is a dud of a bill. It needs to be amended. It is becoming the retail crisis bill. I would like to see it changed. I'm glad that the developer is putting in parking. It is a farce to believe that anybody would buy these properties at the $3 to $4 million price point if they did not have any parking. And what about cumulative impacts? We have Panera Bread coming in across the street as an S B 330 and we've got them all the way down Stevens Creek. Thank you.
Up next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Gil Doyle, followed by Ravi Kuman. Welcome Jean.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm here tonight to urge you to unanimously approve this project. As we all know, this site is long overdue for redevelopment. The Pizza Hut and Fintana's buildings have been vacant for years, well before COVID. There doesn't seem to be any interest in leasing either one. So those parcels need to be put to a different use. They're an eyesore. Staples is limping along. There aren't many customers when I shop there. The location of this site is immediately adjacent to the Crossroads Center, which can serve as the anchor for retail establishments. With the loss of Party City, there's plenty of room for retail, provided there's foot traffic. These homes would help with that foot traffic that's needed. At this point, I don't see a need for additional retail space. There's quite a bit of vacant space in the city. Plus, there's going to be an additional 4,000 square feet at the Westport site. And then there's an additional 2,400 square feet of vacant space that's already there and not leasable. While I would prefer to have a taller multifamily project here, the finance market favors townhomes. So this is a reasonable development. Townhomes are the new starter homes in our community, rather than the traditional single-family homes on a large lot, which are now unaffordable to our children. Townhomes will bring in younger families and their children and the only way to counter the decline in school enrollment. What's even more important is to get this project approved and under construction, given the turmoil and the increase in construction costs and the uncertainty in the financial markets. Please approve this unanimously and send it on to City Council as soon as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you Jean.
Up next, we have Gil Doyle, followed by Ravi Kuman, followed by Louis Morante on Zoom. Welcome Gil.
I'm here to talk about a conditional use permit that Tessellation School has applied for. I live near the school and represent 27 neighbors.
This, this is not the time for oral comments.
I'm sorry?
This is the time for public comments on this particular agenda item.
Oh, sorry.
The time for oral comments already elapsed, so if you might send any written communications, which I believe you have.
I'll wait. I'll speak later.
There will be no oral comments later. The oral comments have ended for today. Thank you. Next.
Our next speaker is Ravi Kuman, followed by Louis Morante, followed by Vivek Sagdiyo. Welcome Ravi. It appears Ravi is not present, so next we have Louis Morante on Zoom. Welcome Louis.
Good evening Commissioners. Excuse me, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Louis Morante. I'm Vice President of Public Policy for the Bay Area Council and I'm here today on behalf of the Council to express our members' unanimous support for Summer Hill Homes project here tonight. Excuse me. The Bay Area Council represents about 350 of the region's largest employers and we have since our founding in 1945 worked to solve regional problems like the immense housing crisis our regions now in. Projects like this are essential for accomplishing that mission. This project checks all the right boxes for Cupertino and the region. It transforms an underutilized commercial site into much-needed housing, including 12 deed-restricted affordable-for-sale units. Affordable ownership options are incredibly rare in new construction in California and this project helps, helps fill that critical gap, especially for moderate-income households who are increasingly priced out of the communities where they work. I really agree with the previous speaker who called townhomes the new starter home. And I just wanted to say I'll be borrowing that creative framing in the future. So thank you. The location of this project is ideal, close to major employers, to schools, existing infrastructure. It's exactly the kind of smart, sustainable infill housing that aligns with the city's own general plan and the heart of the city's specific plan. Cupertino has a state-certified housing element with ambitious RENA targets, excuse me. To meet those targets and avoid potential legal or financial consequences for falling short, it's vital that good projects like this one move forward. This proposal represents progress towards your housing goals without displacing existing residents and while enhancing a key corridor in your city. The Bay Area Council urges you to approve this project tonight and keep Cupertino on a path of legal compliance, affordability, and better housing opportunity. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next and final speaker is Vivek. Welcome Vivek.
Evening. I'm Vivek Sadbhar and it is, I'm glad you are holding this hearing and good to hear all the presentations. I'm the block leader for the Faria block, which is, the Schofield Drive is the next street. So like Rajiv said, I am also right behind, like my house is right behind Staples. So I am directly affected by this. And like Rajiv said, we were not aware of this project. And there was a Schofield project and we had a number of meetings and Pamela had gotten in touch with us to hold a public hearing. So in, there has been talk of S B 330. So S B 330 allows five public hearings. And since the neighborhood, which is directly affected, the people on the Schofield Drive, like Rajiv, me, and few others, we definitely need to have a hearing. And there are many issues here that I can enumerate, which are going to affect us, right? Like there was mentioned that the noise and air quality is okay, but like we definitely, right now we have Staples behind me and there is no noise coming from there, right? Secondly, this is going to be four stories. I won't have any privacy about it, right? My house is two stories and they can look into it. And the wall in between is like less than 10 feet tall. So we would have to do something about the privacy. There are many such issues and there was mentioned that Sequoia should be abandoned and we should approve this. Now S B 330 does not allow to abandon Sequoia and definitely, we definitely need to have that. In the, there was another similar project on a smaller scale on Schofield Drive, which currently is in the courts. And we had a number of meetings with Luke Connolly, who has been, who and his staff have been very cooperative with us and listened to us. And they have raised several objections to that project because of whatever was going on. So I think what, we are not, we are against any, you know, nice, we definitely understand the need for housing and need for this, this project seems very nice. But at the same time, the hearing should be held, the consideration should be given to the existing neighbors. Like Rajiv said, we have been here 20, 25 or more years and we are used to certain lifestyle. Definitely it doesn't include having so many people right behind us and, you know, loss of privacy, noise and air, other things. So hopefully we would hold some hearings and incorporate some changes that make the neighbors' life, life a little bit easier. So I propose definitely further considerations and hearings and we need to meet with Luke Connolly and the city staff, like we did for the other project, and give our feedback and hear back their comments about it. Thank you.
Thank you Vivek.
We have no more speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Commissioners. Would the applicant like to respond to the public comments?
Yes, please. Thank you, Kevin Abrahimi, Summer Hill Homes. Just a couple notes. Originally, when we submitted our S B 330 application, the design of the project was that the building was originally set to be parallel with the adjoining neighbors' homes and it was offset 15 feet from the property line. The comments that we received from staff was, can we redesign the site to see if we can provide a greater setback than 15 feet? Even though we had a waiver for 15 feet, the thought was, anything that we could do would be appreciated. So we took an additional month in our resuminal and we completely redesigned the site where instead of being parallel with the units behind us, we moved the buildings to be perpendicular. So only the end units would be abutting the neighbors and we increased the setback from 15 feet to 35 and 37 feet respectively. So in addition to that, on our third or fourth resuminal, there was conversations from staff with us. And also some of the Commissioners, can we provide additional landscaping buffer between our project and the units behind? And we, we put in a row of trees to completely provide privacy. So that's, that had taken place throughout the, throughout the process. In respect to the stamped asphalt, we provide that to provide a more aesthetic look for the project. In addition, when you have those stamped asphalt at crossings, it does provide a visual safety for the people that are crossing. It, it makes people to get concentrated to use that cross-section instead of just walking through the alleys. Those stamped asphalt pavers are ADA compliant. We'll be more than happy, as we do it in every jurisdiction, to share the manufacturer's information with staff. We're required to do that. Again, we're, we're not married to doing those, but we do think they provide a benefit for the community and the people that, that cross those streets. Just wanted to let you know that we are not touching the Valley Oak. The Valley Oak is approximately 20 feet away from our property line and that's not part of our application. All of the trees and adjacent trees were reviewed by our arborist and third-party reviewed by the city arborist. I think that's all the response I had, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I just took a few notes as we had public comments. Can you comment on the wall height at the rear and what is typical for these types of developments? And what is the current wall height and whether any improvements will be done on that wall?
Sure, so we did evaluate the wall. The wall is in good standing structurally. It's sound and it's in good shape, so we decided to keep the wall. Typically, most jurisdictions don't allow us to go over a six-foot tall wall. This wall, I believe, is just about 10 feet. So we actually liked the height of it for where it's at. We are able to at times get a variance to do a seven-foot wall, but we don't typically get the chance or the opportunity to leave a 10-foot wall in place. And so we're leaving that wall in place.
And can you comment, I know you mentioned about landscaping at the rear of the property to help improve the privacy. Are you able to comment on what sort of landscaping that would be and what the height of that landscaping might be and how it might provide additional privacy?
Yes, so probably not going to pronounce this correctly, but the type of trees that are going there are poparcus? Potocarpus. They are approved by P G N E because these trees are underneath the P G N E lines. They grow approximately 20 feet tall. And when you look at the visual angle from the R units to the two-story units, that 20-foot tall is really the highest that you want to get there. Yeah, so they're going to be planted.
Thank you. And then just running through the questions we had, there was a question on noticing. Maybe I'll start with staff first. What is the requirement for noticing and why are we hearing from residents that they weren't informed?
So typically, what's required for a hearing is that we have the site sign posted at least 14 days prior to the hearing, as was done here. And then we also have mailed notices within a 300-foot radius sent out to the neighbors. In this case, because we knew that there might be some significant interest by the neighborhood, we did have a 500-foot radius for notices sent out. And so those were sent out 10 days prior to this hearing.
And I know the city sent a general communication by email. Did that go out to everybody in the city?
So that went out to anyone who was signed up for our e-notifications for property development.
Okay.
And that's likely over 1,000 people at this point, might be close to two.
And at the onset of the project, before submitting our formal application, we held a community meeting. We sent mailers out within 500 feet of the project. So we had a neighborhood meeting. We took names and anyone who had interest, we continued following up.
And, and the 500 feet, is that including the southern direction where the residential?
It's a radius. It's a 500-foot radius.
And so that would have included Schofield Drive as well?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Any, any requirements on how many community hearings applicants are required to have?
So we don't have a set requirement for the number of hearings, but we do require that public outreach happened before they submit their application, which was what was done here in June of 2024. I don't believe that they had much attendance, if any, at that, unfortunately. But again, we did provide them with those mailing labels for the 500-foot radius, so that way they could use those.
And I see a resident has their hand up. Unfortunately, we can't take public comments. Public comments have been closed, but your comments were noted earlier and happy to have you connect with the applicant offline. At this time, we cannot take resident comments, unfortunately. Sorry, go ahead, if the vice chair wants to add something.
I had one more question for the applicant, following up on the public comment or I guess question around the length of the street that's at the rear side of the property. Is there flexibility around that length?
So there, there is a requirement for a 20-foot wide turnaround for the fire trucks and that's what that street's been designed to. The waiver that we asked for on the frontage of, of the project between our units and Stevens Creek is a direct result of us pushing the whole project forward in order to go from 15 feet to the 35 and 37 foot respectively. So everything got squished as tight as it could with the additional waiver in the front to get that. So we really did work through that with staff to try and redesign the site and get as much as we could.
Thank you.
Hi there. Okay, a couple of questions. One is, I know you said you retain the 10-foot wall in the back. How much, do you know how good it is at noise dampening? And if, if, is there any possibility to add noise dampening to it to make it even further, you know, protective of the residents in the back?
So it is a concrete wall and concrete walls are very good for dampening noise. If we were to build a new wall, it would be a wood-constructed fence, which wouldn't come anything close to what's existing out there.
Got it. And then the second question is, when you start to develop the property, is there a possibility to stagger, how you do things so that you put in the trees in the, along the back fence before you do anything else to give them a chance to get established and provide some privacy and grow fast, you know, before the rest of the property is built out?
Sure, so typically, any landscaping that you do gets destroyed during construction. But what I can do is make a note to see upon the, the construction of the site improvements, that that landscaping goes in first. The, so we'll look at that. One of the challenges that we've had over time is you don't have a water meter or the connection that goes to that area. So we have put in landscaping before and we've had trucks that go and water it, but they mess it for two weeks in a hot time and they all die. So it's a very difficult thing to do, but I will definitely look at our phasing to see as soon as possible, not put it at a later stage when the house is ready, as soon as possible where we have the water, site improvements are done, to be able to make that connection.
That would be helpful, yeah. I mean, because I know you mentioned it'll be a year. So it's like, it just gives the trees, you know, that much longer to get established and provide privacy.
Understood. Thank you.
And I believe there were... And I believe there were additional questions from members of the public that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I forgot. I had one other question.
Yes.
That road in the back, the turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround, how much traffic are you expecting there will be on it?
So if there is an emergency or a fire, the fire truck would need to get in there and do the turnaround. And specifically, that's related to the two units in the back because the remaining buildings have a loop that can get used. And I believe once a week, garbage truck. But it's been designed so that the residents don't need to use that for their access. At one point, when we put this turnaround back there, we also had parking on each side to provide additional parking. In working with staff, we all decided that it was best to remove that guest parking so that there is no use of that.
Okay, and it will, they'll have no parking signs?
Yeah, absolutely, you can. That's a turnaround for fire. There will be no parking signs.
Okay, and all the homes that are on that, on D Street, are able to get in and out of the property without ever using the turnaround?
That's correct. The street width is designed for that, existing at front of their units.
Okay, so it sounds like once a week garbage and then?
Hopefully never a fire, but you know.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will there be any pedestrian gates on the east side? So if a resident wants to walk over to crossroads, they don't have to go all the way out to Stevens Creek and then walk down the sidewalk and then come back?
So currently, there is no connection because the properties to the east and west of us are private properties, and we can't provide access through those. But we have provided a gate, a couple of gates, that are locked at this time. In the future, if a development does get proposed, there's opportunity to make connections to those. And those are the things that staff has the ability to condition when a new project comes forward.
So that area is just parking lot now, right?
That's correct.
For crossroads?
That's correct.
But the crossroads doesn't want to have people have pedestrian access?
At times, it becomes a problem for commercial properties, so, and we can't force that on them.
Okay, because I know the city is really encouraging.
Interconnectivity, and that's why we put in the gates to have that ability to do that when the right, right development comes into future.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe on that same note, a clarifying question to staff. Is there any thought of, I understand this promotes walkability. Is that sort of the driving finding that sort of encourages this kind of connectivity into the neighboring retail parcel? What sort of gives this feedback to the applicant?
Right. It is to promote walkability as well as cohesion of development across that whole corridor. So this applies to anywhere in the heart of the city. So that's kind of why we do want to have those openings provided. I believe that right now, they are pointed towards a parking lot, but they do have a kind of landscape strips and/or other cement areas that are built up there that potentially could lend themselves to pedestrian walkways.
And there is existing precedent for this kind of connectivity today on the heart of the city? For neighboring parcels?
If you could clarify, do you mean that there is connectivity between the parcels? Or that this specific type is being?
This specific type of gate as a means of connectivity?
You know, I'm not sure that we've seen much development with it just because I think where the development has been located, it hasn't lent itself so easily. This is a residential development going in directly next to a commercial development, whereas other ones might not have had the fences up to begin with because they're not residential fully and/or they may have been commercial developments.
And maybe a question to the applicant. When you have these kinds of projects, do you get concerns from buyers that there's a security risk in opening up access to a parcel like this where you may have floating foot traffic? And it allows people that are passing by in the retail parcel to sort of enter into?
Yeah, so we're typically on the H O A board until the project gets established and we're ready to turn it over. I would say the majority of the property owners dislike the openings because of the safety factors that's involved. So we provide it. I understand the need for them. Some people like it, but we do get a lot of pushback. But typically, it's a condition on the project, so we stipulate that needs to stay.
And do you, when you sort of look at your buyer preferences, do you notice a reduced preference for units that are located directly next to such gates?
I don't have that detail. I just know when I've been on the board on these projects, quite a few people don't feel safe for other people accessing their community.
Is this typical of your other projects where you're required to connect into other parcels?
It's very typical in the Bay Area to get asked to provide connectivity.
And again, the precedent there is you keep them locked, or how does that?
No, so a lot of the projects are like this. We provide the potential for connectivity on a future project. I've had it where it's worked out really well. In Mountain View, I had a project off Frank's Surf that we did one project, and we came back years later and did another project, and the connectivity just worked perfectly because we merged the H O A together. So sometimes it works really well. When there is nothing there, like here, we keep it locked until a new development comes, and then it can get coordinated. Sometimes there's an existing development, and we reach out to them and talk about the connection. Sometimes they push back really hard, no. And sometimes they say, okay, but it really goes both ways because people just, because of safety reasons of, it provides a lot of traffic sometimes through communities.
So, I mean, I was thinking more, and I've seen this at other condo projects and other areas, where the residents have a gate with a keypad so they can reach the retail, but it's not open to anyone just walking through the condo project. I don't know what the city's policy is on that, but it would seem like the residents, as long as it's a secure gate, that they, you know, have some way of opening with a key card or a code.
So I had that at Sunnyvale on a project, and it did open up to a retail facility. At some point, the H O A decided to lock it. And because it gets very difficult controlling the lock. So at some point, it's permanently locked. But it worked when we started it, but eventually, as I said, when the H O A comes on, they usually try to appease people who are having issues.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Is this a condition that staff believes is? Do you see sort of resident feedback? I know you get your share of community input on projects in general. And I know the Portal Avenue, for example, there's been a lot of contention about connectivity and so on. It's been a hard button issue for the community that's looking at the development there. I'm wondering, is this something that we believe the applicant wants to see this locked? But is this something that we would want to retain, or any input from staff on that?
Yeah, if I can. Generally, I understand that Summer Hill is proposing to lock them once the development has gone into place. However, our plans, as they are approved right now, don't show that gate being locked and/or as part of it. And then on top of that, we would require, in order for them to meet this accessibility requirement, that there be some sort of access in between the two. And so that is something where, right now, I'm not necessarily hearing that it's going to be open one way, but that could be accomplished through maybe a one-way opening, right? Allowing residents to go into the commercial area. But again, based on our conditions and what's provided on the plans, our understanding is that this will be open for residents to access that retail area.
Yeah, if I may point out, we didn't realize it needs to be opened. I don't know if we have permission to let people access another property. Our understanding was that we're providing this for future use, not at this point. And that's what I would propose a commission to help on.
Understood. Other questions or comments?
Can you clarify exactly where these gates are?
You want to point that out?
Right about where Emmy's mouse is. And I think there's another one a little bit over to the right there.
What about on the west side?
There is not.
There is no access to that path.
And as Kevin said, it's also, we don't have the rights to come through on the other side. And the physical improvements, there's no walkway or anything to receive pedestrian traffic on the other side.
But in the corner there, there's no pedestrian sidewalk there either, is there?
Neither location.
On our side, there is.
Oh, on ours, there is.
Yes, on our side, there is a sidewalk on both locations, but on the receiving side, it's just cars.
I understand, okay. But from a connectivity perspective, why are we not connecting to the west side? In case that property ever gets developed in a way that may want connectivity?
So again, when we're reviewing these, we're looking at the existing connectivity. This church, which is quite old here, we do expect to remain there at this point, and we can't necessarily require the connection to it based on what the standard language is. And so the standard language is for connectivity between the parcels, and it's specifically under kind of a commercial mixed-use discussion rather than this much more private use that's going on at the church.
Got it.
So as a clarifying question to staff, just given, you know, some of the concerns we have heard from other parts of the community around these kinds of accesses and the concerns around, you know, whether this is something that would be preferred or not, would this be something we can make a motion to waive? Does this need a motion to waive? Or how would we, if we chose to allow the applicant to not have this connectivity, what is required? Is there a motion we need to make for that?
Right, that would be an amendment to the plans at that point, right? So we could go in and change what's being proposed within the resolution and make that change.
And maybe a question to the applicant, is that going to slow you down at costs? Or would you prefer to?
I would prefer not to have them, but if we are going to have them, I believe they should be locked at such time as a development's proposed under other site, and it can somehow connect.
Okay, okay.
Very often, if I just jump in, is that is why you want to have the potential for the access reserved at this time? Because the other site may redevelop as well. And a lot of the connectivity had to do with connectivity between commercial parcels. So it could even be auto-related, not pedestrian-related. So you're not having to get in your car and drive in and out to go shopping center to shopping center. I think the dynamic changes now is you're going to be getting more residential like this mixed with commercial. I mean, you're going to see more things like this in the future. So I think the concept of having connectivity between commercials still applies because you're going to have more of a mix of uses. Essentially, you're having a holding pattern for when the property on the other side, you can then get that access to it. Because we do have projects where we have easements reserved for the future, where there's a condition of approval that at such time as the neighboring property redevelops, you'll establish that connection. But it can be harder if you miss it on the first site because then they're redeveloped, and if they want to remain essentially secluded, you're not going to be, you could have a tougher time getting that access back in the future.
But I guess the flip side of that is if the retail parcel on the east side would redevelop into a density that, I don't know, is that an R four, hazardous zone today? What is?
Right now, that's commercially zone, so that's not a housing element site. So it's a P C G rez, like most of Stevens Creek.
Right, so if the parcel on the east side chose to redevelop and their parking requirements were different than what this parcel had, it opens up the same kind of concerns that we have seen from other parts of the neighborhood where a community like this that does offer eleven guest spaces might just see people walking in. But more importantly, I think there's concerns around privacy and safety as well.
Right, and I think it would depend too, is if the adjacent parcel redeveloped as mixed-use and retained commercial, that it could be beneficial for this project to be able to access the commercial portion of that site. So it's difficult to know at this time because we don't know what it could become or when. Right now, there really isn't any demand we're seeing for commercial, but five or 10 years, that could change.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So I don't think we need an amendment because the connection is there now. It's just, it's?
It's not being used, but it's there.
It's not being used, but there's nothing for us to really say about it. It's there, and it's not used.
The question, Commissioner, was whether a motion to waive that connectivity was a possibility?
If I can just?
I would not favor that.
Yeah, I would not favor that either because to Luke's point, we don't know what's going to come, and it's going to be a lot harder to undo it if we want connectivity. And right now, there is no connectivity. We're going to keep it locked, right? So let's not close off our options because you never know if we might want to use it 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the line. I mean, we're making a decision that's going to last us for 50-plus years, and we don't know what the repercussions of that are. And it would be better to keep our options open just in case. We need that at some point.
If I could.
Yeah, please.
So I guess as the builder and the ultimate H O A president for a while, as we're selling the homes, I would ask if we could be conditioned to be able to lock the gates until such time as a development is proposed next door. I just want to make sure we have the ability to lock the gates at this time. We can install them, put them in place, but if we leave them open, right now, it's opening into cars, parked cars, and I don't know if that provides any safety for anyone.
Follow-up question on that. So, you know, with the current staff recommendation, does that assume that the gates are locked? Does it need to be specified?
The assumption isn't made through the language. And so if we're wanting to clarify that, that that's the intent, then potentially you want to revisit that language. Okay, thank you.
But what does it actually say right now? Is there a requirement to have a gate? Is there a requirement for it to be, you know, to not be logged?
So there's nothing that specifically says must be unlocked necessarily, but it does say that the passage needs to remain, I think it's open at this point, is what it says. And I'll have to double-check what that language is. And so again, we'll just want to make sure that we're clear on that so there isn't any discrepancy when reviewing future plans.
So as long as we make the language that there needs to be an opening, but the H O A has the?
Ability to lock the gates.
If they vote to do so, then I think we're okay, right? But I don't know that, if you could just clarify, if the current language precludes that? Or if it doesn't preclude that, then I think we're okay without making any amendments. If it precludes that specifically, then we can talk about it. But if it doesn't preclude it, then I would rather just leave it as it is.
If you would give me one moment, I'll go ahead and read through that and see what it specifically says.
It sounds like the commission then is saying you could have secured gates, but you just want to make sure there's an opening that at such time it can be used and kept open, it would be there. Which makes sense, I think.
I think if we just say there are, you know, there are gates and just leave it at that, and then the H O A can decide whether to close them or not, but it's not specified in our ordinance, one way or the other.
And then looking at the other questions we had, just moving on. There were questions around the L O S and V M T. Was there a requirement that staff placed on the applicant to do L O S, V M T?
I can answer that. Is the L O S requirement, so level of service, for people that aren't familiar with that. The city's transportation division asks for a level of service analysis, which is entirely unrelated to CEQA. So it's more to look at operational issues for Stevens Creek. I have not seen that report because CEQA is, at this point, limited to vehicle miles travel analysis that changed seven or eight years ago. L O S used to be the CEQA standard. You cannot use that anymore. Also, this project was exempt from CEQA, class thirty-two infill exemption. So when you're doing an L O S analysis, it's more or less for informational purposes about operations on a roadway. It's not to affect vehicle miles traveled, which is what CEQA is looking at. I mean, the difference really between the standards is L O S is measuring an inconvenience factor. How long are you sitting at a light? That's really what it measures. V M T is essentially tied to greenhouse gas emissions and air quality, so it's more environmentally focused. So I understand the one speaker that if you've followed CEQA over the years, L O S was the standard. But that has changed, and it's not something you can ask for anymore in relation to CEQA analysis.
Okay. And then I think there was another question around the why we believe this was CEQA exempt. I think there were a couple of restaurants that had questions around the CEQA exemption, if you might?
CEQA exemption and courts have recently been more insistent that if a project qualifies, you need to use an exemption. The class thirty-two exemption is for urban infill sites. So if you're in an urbanized area surrounded by urban development, which the site is, you're five acres or less, the site's about three, and you're consistent with land use policies, general plan and zoning, which this project is through the density bonus, that you are exempt from CEQA. So it meets those. So it meets those thresholds for a CEQA exemption.
Okay, very good. I think we covered all of the public questions that were there. Commissioner, did you have any other questions here? I don't know if I closed the public hearing, but I think we can, at this point, close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And then, for the purpose of moving the discussion along, maybe, sorry, wait. Yeah, so maybe have a motion for the purpose of just moving this discussion forward?
I move that we accept the staff recommendation to recommend this to council to approve as written.
I second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the purpose of discussion. Anyone want to bring up any discussion items?
No, I just have some comments. First of all, I appreciate the concern of the residents on Schofield who don't like the reduced setback from, if it was not an SB 330 project, what would be required? But, you know, state law prevents us from requiring the 59-foot setback. And I would also remind everyone, the developer could have built a much denser and much taller development on this project. And the fact that those kind of projects are no longer economically feasible, and instead we're getting a townhouse project is actually a very good thing. The fact that there's no retail, there's a lot of retail nearby, I don't think that's an issue. The SB 330 waivers are fairly minor. They're building townhouses suitable for families, they're in high demand, and they'd be profitable. This will all have solar on the roof of every unit, so reducing greenhouse gas, reducing utility costs, something you can't get with the super-high-density projects. And unlike some other builders, they are not trying to get out of paying park impact fees or school impact fees, which is greatly appreciated. It has adequate parking, even though they could use AB 2097 to do inadequate parking. And finally, unlike some other projects in the city, the BMR units are inclusionary, and they're not separated from the market rate units. They're all intermixed, which is also appreciated. So, I mean, I really think this is about the best project we could hope for. I appreciate all Summer Hill has done with this. And, oh, also, this is in with the boundary, within the boundaries of Monta Vista High School, which is currently under-enrolled and could certainly use some more students. So we could have ended up with a terrible project at this site, and instead we're getting something pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scharf. Any other discussion points that anybody would like to bring up?
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo Commissioner Scharf's comments. I think this is a good project, and we really appreciate you being thoughtful about it and really trying to work with the community and listen to the community's concerns. Clearly, a lot of thought went into all the details, so very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, first off, thank staff for having the foresight to encourage the developer to put in more rear setback. And I know that also credit goes to Pugh, she's not here tonight. But, you know, as it turns out, the residents would like even more setbacks, so that intuition was correct, so thank you. I do think that there is an opportunity to improve the community, noticing the community meeting had one person in attendance. So for the future, to the extent that we can consider widening the radius, I think 500 feet, if I look at it, is maybe five homes. So to expect that, you know, you're going to get five out of five homes in attendance is, you know, maybe a little bit unrealistic. So either that, or working through the block leaders. The Schofield area has a very active block leader. You know, just more ways to disseminate the information throughout the community a little bit more, rather than just expecting, you know, five houses to show up. Can there be a virtual option? The mail just seems to get ignored consistently, and we're seeing low turnout at the community meetings. But also, I'm hearing that, you know, the community was surprised about this, and they weren't informed. So for whatever reason, the mailers are not getting read. So let's explore other ways of, channels of outreach. You know, I am disappointed about the loss of retail. I think we all want it as much as the public does. And I think that's just initiatives at the council level around retail and zoning strategy. But ultimately, you know, I do echo the sentiment of the other commissioners here, that, you know, I appreciate this project and the 12 affordable units. I think that will be a great contribution to this community, so thank you.
So I'll echo a lot of the comments of my fellow commissioners as well. Maybe I'll be a little tougher on you. When we had the discussion, you know, and I met with Steve, we did talk about, I think it's unfortunate that, given this location, that the density was not higher. You know, I'm a big supporter of the housing element that was adopted. There are, in terms of reducing the impact from having higher density in the city, you know, locations like this are a good place to have it. And so there's, a lot of these things are a bit of a balance. I think that, you know, because these units are ownership units, that, I think that is a good thing, and I think everybody is supportive of that. But that does make this a somewhat kind of forever decision. So that does make it a little tough. I would actually just say, you know, in the process of planning it out, if, you know, for some reason, you need to reconsider the offering, you know, please consider having, you know, two-floor-on-two-floor units, or perhaps some smaller units, increase the numbers. And that would actually make, you know, homes that could be purchased accessible to even more people, you know, to a wide range of people. So I would just say, consider that. But I would say, you know, every unit you build will be welcomed. The people will really appreciate, the location is fantastic. I think the units will be welcomed, particularly the year addition of BMR units is significant. It's 12 units, a significant number to add. And then, again, you know, because they are units for purchase, that is, you know, a financial, you know, fantastic financial situation, opportunity that you're creating. So I think that's really great, that those are happening. I think that there was a lot of thought, you know, relative to what could be built, what the general plan and the housing element would have allowed. This is going to be a lot easier for the adjacent R1 area. I mean, that's a design problem here, that we don't have, you know, that you kind of have the commercial areas immediately bordered by R1 homes. So I think, I appreciate your thoughtfulness in doing this. And in fact, I was going to say, a number of people have cited here the fact that the exemptions you've asked for are very, very minor in scope. And that one of them was to move the, you know, the entire structure forward to make it easier on your neighbors. So I think that's appreciated. You didn't mention that in your presentation, and you should have. Let's see, and I guess, yeah. And the last part, I would say, again, something that wasn't mentioned here, and, you know, hopefully it'll turn out that way. It seemed like there was a lot of motivation to make this happen, you know, sooner rather than later. And I hope that, I wish you good luck in that. Thank you.
Okay, I guess a lot of my fellow commissioners are moving into closing comments. I was thinking we were still going to have a robust discussion here. Are there other questions or discussion items from other commissioners? I could keep going. Maybe staff can comment on, I know you've gone through several rounds of iterations with the applicant. Can you give us a little bit of teaser insight into the sausage-making on design options not chosen, or that, you know, the applicant would have liked to see, that maybe staff guided them away from? You know, what can you share on options not taken? And I'd like the applicant comment as well, if there's anything there that you would like to have seen that didn't go as expected.
Emmy certainly worked on this more than I did. But I think a lot of what the, how the project evolved came out in the discussion. The things that you're referencing right now, like moving the project northward, more towards Stevens Creek and away from the Schofield neighborhood. The building heights, I think, sort of are what they are for the housing product. But I think it was trying to be mindful of the adjacent uses, keeping the landscape buffers there. You know, and I sort of look at this as, this is kind of that first wave of the project as Stevens Creek transitions to more mixed uses, being side-by-side. And as I think we learned on the housing element, you're getting the higher-density housing that are having sort of rear yard-to-rear yard, that transition. So I think those things evolved as this came in, because the project has sort of adjusted to be as least impactful as it can, even though it's not a single-family home, they're bigger buildings. But I think, as several commissioners said, they could have been much bigger buildings still had this come in under the housing element. So I don't know if the applicant has anything to add, but that's about my view.
Could I add just a couple of things there? I think additionally, we did have them protect the landscaping along Stevens Creek. That's something that we are trying to implement as we get new development in. Having the two rows of street trees come in, making sure that that's fully there. And so they did protect that even with the waiver to reduce the setback. Additionally, they had four stories across all buildings at one point with roof decks on all of them. And then I think to be mindful of the neighbors and privacy impacts. Those were removed from everything except for those middle two buildings that you see there. So they're impacts exclusively on the development itself. And I think those are two things that I would notice well.
Yeah, and I appreciate staff sharing some of that, because I think sometimes we see the finished review product that we are looking at, and you've gone through a lot of effort to get to that point. And I think the community would benefit from hearing that, both from the applicant and from staff. When you go through those changes, it's not every day that we see those changes where the applicant is considerate of the community, is looking to partner with the community, and hopefully will be here as a long-term partner for the community. And so I'm sure Schofield Drive neighbors appreciate that reduction in height, at least in the outer periphery versus the inner periphery. So certainly helps to share some of that. It may not be in the staff report, but, you know, we welcome staff sharing that in your presentation.
So I think Emmy just pointed it out, we underwrote the project with having the rooftops on all the units. That was tough on us to take those out, because when you underwrite it, it impacts your lenders, it is a very big impact. But as we've worked with staff, we realized it is better to remove those because of the surrounding neighborhood. The second thing that we wound up doing that also had an impact, but we were able to do it on this project, is we originally had bigger units that extended all the way up to Stevens Creek, where the open space, private common areas, where we're having our public art. Originally, we were going to pay for the art, and the buildings' square footages were greater on that stretch of the building. We got several comments, can you provide a greater private common open space and do the art, so it's seen at Stevens Creek? So we reduced the unit sizes on that building and provided that private common space. So those were the two big things that impacted the project underwriting, but got incorporated into the project. And there's a lot of engineering stuff that I don't think anybody's interested on, about the street sections and all of those. But those went back and forth about eight to 10 months, and we finally got to have it settled.
And any comment on the plaza in the front? I guess the, is the staff requirement that accessibility to the plaza be open from the sidewalk? And is it a requirement? Or is that something that you have design flexibility around in how the plaza is usable?
Right, so you're speaking of the public art installation in the very front there. So that, there are certain requirements for accessibility that are within our public art standards. However, staff isn't making necessary recommendations at this time, because that is going to be reviewed by the Arts and Culture Commission for their review for consistency, as well for their recommendations based on the site characteristics.
Well, I don't know if it is the public art or the plaza. I guess there's a...
They're one and the same.
They're one and the same, okay. So the plaza itself is not reviewed by the Art and Culture Commission, though, is it?
So my understanding is that the plaza is there to support the art being in that location. And so to provide the accessibility there, providing that plaza area.
Okay. And so is there design flexibility for the applicant in how they would design that plaza in terms of seating and stuff?
I believe, reading the criteria there is, and I think we were taking the comment that we received to see how we can design it so that it doesn't get misused. And we've already talked to our consultants, and we're going to be working through that.
Okay, great. And then I had another question on the trees on the southern side. I guess there were fewer than one tree per unit. Can, I don't know if your landscape architect is here, but can you speak to the trees per unit on the southern side?
I think the number of trees, one should go in and...
Was this one tree at the fence line between properties? Were you looking to do a tree per unit, when you look at the...
There's a total number of trees that we're supposed to provide, and that's 60.
Yeah, the replacement number is approximately 65, and we're planting 100. We tried to get as many as we could, including the ones that we talked about the other day.
Yeah, so there's considerable greater number of trees that are being planted than is required.
I guess, given some of the comments around privacy, my question was whether, if you look at maybe it's building five and six, whether there is a possibility to locate the trees in a way that ensures that privacy? And maybe that's already the case, maybe you can...
Yes, we got that comment, and we're incorporating additional trees at front of those buildings.
Okay, great, wonderful. So I'm running out of questions, and my fellow commissioners aren't adding any more. So with that, I think we have a motion and a second. Is there any amendment? Does anyone need to make any amendments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, staff, for all the great work. And thanks to the applicant for being very considerate of the community. I know you have several projects in the community, and the feedback varies depending on the site. So I hope you will continue to be a good partner for the neighborhoods and keep their feedback in mind as you look at your future projects. So with that, we are going to move forward to the next agenda item. I believe there's no old business, and there's no new business. And so we're down to staff and commission reports. Were there any commission reports or staff reports, maybe?
I'd be happy to go with two updates. One is the Upland Way project, which was sort of our last remaining builder's remedy, was a six-unit project. Similar to two projects earlier in January, the Vista Heights and Schofield projects, which were found to be incomplete after the 90-day review period, this project is as well. So it essentially is deemed inactive at this point in time, and no longer a project. The second update, and some of you may be aware of, last week, the city council had its first reading to adopt the CAL FIRE fire hazard zone maps. And the council went with the CAL FIRE adoption. There were no additional properties added, which, if you watched the hearing, you may know, you're unable to remove properties from the list, so all you could do is add to it. So there will be a second reading on that next week before it is formally adopted. And that was the only two updates I had.
Thank you, Luke. Any commission reports?
I don't have a report. I just want to know when the RV ordinance is coming back to planning commission, because...
That will be the next item, which is future agenda setting. And we're not yet there.
All right, thank you.
But any other commission reports? No one else? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to future agenda setting. I don't know if there's any response to Commissioner Scharf's question. I believe you're...
Yeah, there's just been more resident concern that the situation seems to be getting worse.
I can say that this is something that we are targeting for an upcoming meeting, so stay tuned, it may be the next one or the one after.
That was my response, is it may likely be the one after, but it is definitely upcoming.
Okay, very good. Anything else on future agenda setting? Okay, hearing none, the meeting is returned.